We're going to move on to item 6.2 or 9:06 AM item, consideration of update on COVID-19. And I am looking for Dr. Bloom, and there he is. Dr. Bloom, good morning. The floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and good morning, Board. Thank you very much. I will be as brief as I can. I know there's lots of things to get through this morning. So here is the update on COVID-19 in the county. First, I'm gonna talk about a quick overview regarding cases and the tier that we're in and vaccination status. And then I'm going to pass it over to Sarah, our epidemiologist, to talk specifically about the data. And then I'll delve briefly a little bit more into detail in some of the areas. So regarding our cases, we continue to have a very low case count, which is fantastic. From May 9th through the 15th, we've had 15 cases, and our case rate is 3.3 per 100,000, and our test positivity is 2.1%. These numbers are about in line with what they have been over the past few weeks. So no major change there, which is great because these numbers are very low. As far as our tier, we are in orange. As I had said before, I anticipate us being in orange until the end of the tiered system. And we go beyond the blueprint on June 15th. And I still believe that we will be in orange until June 15th, and with those same recommendations. Beyond June 15th, we will just have to use our common sense and what makes us feel comfortable as the restrictions tied to these tiers will all go away, except for mega-events, which are large gatherings of people between 5, I should say, greater than 5,000 indoor or 10,000 people outdoors. Regarding vaccination status, we, as a county, are about 52% at least partially vaccinated, which is still far away from our 70%, but 52% is pretty good. We still have a good amount of vaccine, and we are able to procure a vaccine fairly easily when our supplies get low. We have a number of areas within the county where you can get vaccinated. As I've mentioned before, a number of commercial areas, as well as through the health systems in the county. And they continue to take appointments as well as walk-ins. There certainly have been a few hiccups regarding some of the vaccination sites, both with walk-ins and appointments, where some vaccine that should have been ordered to cover those appointments and walk-ins was not at certain sites, and therefore it was a little bit low. However, we are aware of the problem, and we are currently addressing it, so that does not happen again. As far as demand, demand is certainly slowing for vaccine. We see about a 1% increase in vaccination coverage per week or a little more than each week. And so that definitely needs to be addressed, as we still have a bunch of work to do. That being said, I'd like to pass it off to Sarah so that we can see the actual numbers for this past week. Sarah? If she's on.
Thank you, Dr. Bloom. Good morning, everyone. I have a quick update, and I feel a little bit like a broken record, but I think that's it's because we continue to have good indicators of declining transmission throughout. And like Dr. Bloom said, fairly stable numbers in Lake County. So here, we're looking at testing statewide on the left and test positivity statewide on the right. Testing is down slightly statewide from the previous week, though not significantly so. And the test positivity, the most recent seven-day average, is 0.8%, which is phenomenal to see that stay right around 1% and below 1% statewide. Statewide, we see the lowest daily case rate we've seen since the beginning of the pandemic, at 2.7 cases per 100,000. And as cases decline, we, of course, see a fewer number of COVID deaths. Lake County remains in the orange tier today. The state will announce the latest metrics, which is based on data from May 9th through the 15th. And like Dr. Bloom said, daily case rate of 3.3 per 100,000 and a testing positivity of 2.1%. This is very similar to the two previous weeks. The map shows the tier status of the state's 58 counties. Last week, three counties, three more counties moved into the yellow or minimal transmission tier for 13. The majority of counties statewide are obviously in the orange or moderate tier like Lake County, and about 10 counties are in the red tier. And we'll see a little bit of movement when it's announced by the state today. So here is the Epi-curve, which shows the number of new cases identified by week in the county. So here you can see, just want to point out, you can see how we've really stabilized the last couple of weeks, ranging from 11 to 16 cases identified in May. For the week of May 16th that we just finished, when I ran this data two days ago, we've identified about 14 cases. I want to comment on recent cases. So in the last month and a half or so, the cases have, the racial and ethnic background of cases has mirrored the county racial, ethnic composition. So 60% of cases have been white, non-Hispanic. About 20% of cases have been Latino or Hispanic. And then I think maybe one or two cases were identified in people of other racial or ethnic identities. In terms of age, half of cases were among people 20 to 54 years. And they represent about a third of the population, but made up about 50% of the cases, which is what we've seen through most of the pandemic. And then we continue to see cases who live throughout Lake County. Does not seem to be concentrated in one particular area, so a handful of cases throughout the county. Shifting to vaccination coverage, about 28,500 people are at least partially vaccinated. This is 52% of Lake County residents 12 years of age and older. So I think when we were here two weeks ago, we may have still been reporting on the percentage 16 years of age and older. And now that 12 to 15-year-olds are eligible, we'll now be reporting 12 years of age and older moving forward. So 52% of the eligible population is at least partially or fully vaccinated. Compared to California, 63% of Californians 12 years of age and older, or at least partially, are fully vaccinated. So in Lake County, about 43% of people 12 years of age and older, or about almost 24,000 people, are fully vaccinated. And now, like Dr. Bloom said, still trying to work towards that 70 to 80% coverage for herd immunity. So wanted to look at where we could target to improve vaccination coverage throughout the county. So we've shared these data previously. We can see in this collection of zip codes, 95422, 95423, and these other four, we have a lower percentage of vaccine coverage, about 39% of the population living there, at least partially vaccinated, compared to 50% of residents 12 years of age or older in zip codes like 95426, 95451, and the other four. But I wanted to drill down to give us a better sense of where efforts, where we still, where we could focus on improving vaccination coverage. So the data on the right shows zip code, the percent with at least one dose, and the estimated number of people 12 years and age of older who live in this zip code. I excluded two zip codes where fewer than 500 people live. So you can see here that in zip code 95422, 36% of people 12 years of age or older have received at least one dose, so about 1 in 3 eligible people. And the total estimated population in this zip code is nearly 13,000 people. So I think 95422 clearly is a community or an area where public health and healthcare and community efforts could target, has the largest share of the population, the eligible population, has the lowest vaccination coverage, and would need about 4,500 more people in this zip code to reach about 70% coverage. And then I've highlighted a handful of other communities or zip codes, excuse me, that have a lower vaccination rate than the county average, where about 2,000 to 3,000 people of the eligible population live. Now we'll look, after targeting opportunities to target geographically, we'll look by race, ethnicity. And we're seeing among Latinos and white non-Hispanics, fairly similar vaccine coverage at 43 and 45%. And by age group, we can see, obviously, with 12, 12 to 17-year-olds becoming newly eligible, there's a lot of work to be done to vaccinate the younger population. Only 4% as of last week were partially or fully vaccinated. And we can see still tremendous work to be done to target 18 to 49-year-olds, where only about 1 in 3 are partially or fully vaccinated. Continue to see increases in the 50 to 64-year-old population to become vaccinated at 64% as of last week. And want to note here, and I'll show on the next slide, 60% of people 65 and older are fully or partially vaccinated. And this is really, progress here is really slowed. You can see that here by this graph. So this is looking at fully vaccinated over time, and the pink is population 65 and older. So you can see that that's really started to slow. So I would just all, in closing, say I think there's great opportunity to target where 18 to 49-year-olds, they make up the largest share of the county's population, only about 1 in 3 are at least partially protected through the vaccine. I think it's also, obviously, an opportunity to reach teenagers. And then I think geographically, looking at 95422 and surround another zip codes with a lower percentage of people who've received the vaccine would help address and increase vaccination coverage throughout the county. Thank you. I'll turn it back to Dr. Bloom.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate that. So just to discuss a little bit more, am I on mute? Nope.
No, we can hear you.
Okay, wonderful. Just to discuss a little bit more regarding the cases. Obviously, as we've been drilling home, we're in a good place at this moment with the cases. Cases still exist. We're still having them. We had, you know, 15 cases over the past week, but they are certainly low. The state's numbers are a little bit lower than our numbers, but essentially, considering we are a small county, we're about the same. I would be remiss if I did not mention that there have been a couple of cases after vaccination which have been identified at this point, which is expected as no vaccine is 100% protective. And these vaccines are highly protective, but certainly not 100%. And so we have had a couple of cases, literally a couple. But that being said, the cases have been either asymptomatic cases, meaning it was a test that was positive, but the patient did not have symptoms for COVID-19, or that the patient did have symptoms with COVID-19, but that they were mild and not anywhere towards the severe area of symptoms, which is what we would expect. And which is why the vaccine is our greatest form of protection at this point. The tier that we are in, as I mentioned, is orange, as Sarah mentioned, is orange. And the tier that we will be until June 15th, for all intents and purposes, is orange. So at June 15th, when all of the tiers go away, we will have common sense measures. Wear a mask if it makes you comfortable. If you're in a situation where you feel that a mask is appropriate and necessary, then go ahead, feel comfortable to wear a mask, and take precautions because the virus is still here. There's only a little of it because we've done such a good job, but it is still circulating in the county. So we have to be reasonable so that we don't give it safe harbor to grow and infect more people. That being said, for larger events, such as indoor events greater than 5,000 people, outdoor events greater than 10,000 people, there will be some restrictions as those are very high risk for communicable spread. And those restrictions are on the California DPH website, and they will be a requirement for asking regarding vaccination status or a negative COVID-19 test prior to entry to those events. As far as the vaccine rollout, so as I mentioned before, the vaccine rollout is moving along. There are plenty of places in the county to get vaccine, to get scheduled to get vaccine or to walk in. And again, there have been some hiccups with that, but those problems are being addressed currently. The mass drive-through sites have been now closed for about two weeks. And those were, those were being directed by the Department of Public Health. And now, the Department of Public Health has been working on focusing our targeted efforts towards certain areas for the most work. As Sarah had mentioned and has discussed, those are three specific areas. That is the 18 to 49 age group, the 65-plus age group, and the HPI-1 group, which encompasses those zip codes which were specifically discussed during Sarah's presentation. So again, just to be specific, the 18 to 49 age group has about 66% of that population not vaccinated, and that is a very large population. So that is where we are going to be focusing efforts, as well as the 65-plus population, which has a decent number of people vaccinated, but are at the highest risk for illness if you get sick. So that population still has about 40% unvaccinated folks. So we would like to target that population as well and try to increase that vaccination percentage as much as possible. The ways that we are doing that, and that we have been discussing moving forward, are, it's really a multi-pronged approach. So we want to make our efforts as effective and as targeted as possible, which is to target those who are access limited, who want the vaccination, or who have been thinking about the vaccination, but have been unable to do it for whatever various access limitation reason. There are areas on the MyTurn website that you can go on to, to say, hey, listen, I want the vaccine, but I can't get to any of the locations for whatever reason, and I'm interested in getting it in my home. So you can note that, and then we do get that information at the Department of Public Health. There has been very low uptake of that option or that request to date. So if you fall into that category, then please go and request that, and then we can get a better idea of the numbers that we have and what the needs will be so that we can get that vaccination to you. Also, we want to provide a further, we're thinking of further mobile clinics or pop-up clinics in areas of need so that even though you may not be access limited, you will have greater access and there will be greater ease to obtain the vaccination within your geographic locale. And again, specifically, we'll be targeting those specific areas that I mentioned before in those zip codes. Furthermore, we want to increase communication and messaging on a targeted basis towards populations that are under vaccinated at this point, and we'll be working to do that. And certainly, schools are on the list of the locations that may be vaccination points in the future to further gain some progress within that 12-plus area and families of those folks who are 12 years of age and older. We also are looking at further involving the two health systems within the county as they do have resources, including mobile resources that we can utilize and flex to further get the vaccine out there. And also, to, we're in further discussions, or hope to be, I should say, in further discussions, to further talk about ways to use de-identified data to possibly get further granularity of data on where our efforts need to be and how we can incrementally improve our vaccination numbers, as we still have plenty of work to do, as we're still behind the state. But I think that we certainly can get our numbers up slowly but surely. So our conclusion is that our cases remain low. The tier is orange and will be until June 15th, when we move beyond the blueprint to just common sense measures, except for those mega-site requirements that I mentioned. And use your common sense, you know, don't be silly. The virus is still out there. If you're vaccinated, you're vaccinated for a reason, and you can absolutely have a greater sense of safety when you are moving about the county. And that is the whole reason to get vaccinated, to protect yourself and to protect your loved ones. But still, use your common sense. Wear a mask when you feel like a mask is appropriate. And until June 15th, though, we'll still be under the recommendations that we are currently operated, excuse me, operating. Vaccine demand has decreased, and we'll be working with those various methods to try to increase incrementally that demand and that vaccination coverage. And currently, approximately 52% of Lake County is at least partially vaccinated. Our goal still remains 70%. There are plenty places to get vaccinated, as I mentioned before. Pharmacies, Safeway, Adventist, Sutter, OptumServe sites. So please seek those out. If you have been thinking about getting vaccinated, go on, make an appointment. And again, if vaccine is available, which it should be, as we're working to make sure that that is the case, there should be some walk-in availability at these locations as well. If you're in the area and you want to walk in and see if they have a vaccine to get the vaccine, go for it. Lastly, the Department of Public Health has been working on strategies and is continuing to work on strategies to operationalize our targeted approach to incrementally increase our vaccination coverage in the county. And that is our current and future work regarding COVID-19 at this time. That is all. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bloom. Any questions from the board for Dr. Bloom? Supervisor Pyska.
Thank you, Dr. Bloom. I'm just wondering if we have data on the positive cases for the age ranges? And are we seeing severe cases as well?
Severe cases in general, or severe cases that are, you're just talking about general positives?
Yeah, general positives. Who are the people that are still contracting it? And have we seen any severe cases of those?
Sure. So the people and the cases who are contracting it generally are in that middle age group I'm talking about in general. Obviously, it spans the age range, including some children. But the great majority are in that middle age range that we're discussing, the 18 to the 49, or slightly older age range unexpectedly, as those are the people who are mostly out and about in the community and have more interactions. If you would like further details on that, I can certainly get the data for you. As far as severe cases, there are still some severe cases, depending on the person who gets it. Again, unfortunately, this virus is unpredictable. And certainly, there are people that are at greater risk, those people that have comorbid medical conditions, diabetes, hypertension, lung disease, heart disease. However, that being said, sometimes you don't have any comorbid conditions and can get a severe case. We have certainly seen a decrease, decline, in those types of cases in this county. And a number of the cases are mild to moderate symptomatology and don't require hospitalization. But we are still intermittently seeing here and there people that do require hospitalization.
Thank you. So my next question is about the senior centers and as they're going to be opening up. And what protocols are going to be in place or requirements for vaccines and testing for seniors to be beginning to mingle more?
That is a great question, and I don't, again, I don't want to misspeak regarding that, so I can get you specifics on that, on the senior centers themselves. And I want to get back to you regarding that. I can certainly speak from what has been discussed before, but I don't want to say something that is incorrect. So I will get back to you regarding the specifics.
Great, thank you. And I know we hit it hard with the senior centers in the beginning, but you know, as seniors start to come back out into the population and show up at senior centers, I think that's another opportunity to help with vaccinations. You know, if there's a mobile site that could go to the senior center, if new seniors are interacting, because we still have that high amount of seniors in our county that haven't been vaccinated.
Absolutely.
Any other comment from supervisors?
So I have a question, and I appreciate the hard work that public health has done to try and make sure that we continuously have vaccines available. And I know that was a little bit of a hiccup. I'm just curious, what is the protocol for communication for that? Are people being automatically reappointed, created a new appointment? Are they being contacted? I'm just kind of curious. I want to make sure those people who were, who had an appointment to get a vaccine are not falling through the cracks and are kind of moving along.
Right. So, excuse me, my apologies. Good question. Thank you very much. So the people who were having appointments and were unable to receive the vaccine because of a lack of supply at that time should be recontacted. Now, the different vaccine outlets within the county are run slightly differently. And so certain outlets are run through contractors, certain outlets are run through corporate institutions. And so the way that the contacting of the participants who have appointments or who are walk-ins is a little bit different depending on the way that that specific site is run. That being said, that's part of our outreach, and there have been many emails back and forth and conversations regarding the hiccups that we had to make sure that they're not happening again. And that is part of that conversation. So that process, that communication process will be confirmed, as well as internal communication processes regarding if there is a low amount of vaccine or if there is an anticipated lack of vaccine, so that we have, again, hammered out our initial and then backup communication processes so that this does not happen again.
Okay, thank you for that. The other part is that there's a bunch of vaccine sites throughout the county. And I was just going through MyTurn real quick while you were speaking and doing your presentation. And the only spots that show anything is Adventist Health Clear Lake and Safeway Pharmacy in Lakeport. Is there a way that we can make sure that either A, they're not showing up because maybe there's no availability, and so I just don't see it? But I've been looking at a couple of days in a row, and I've never seen OptumServe pop up. I've never seen Walmart pop up, and I know those are two locations, at least in the southern area of the Lake County. And I'm wondering if we can make sure that MyTurn has every single one of those facilities that are available to provide vaccines, rather than just a couple or few that may be on the list?
Thank you very much for that. Yes. So oftentimes, the appointment slots are taken, but they should still be showing. So I will absolutely look into that and make sure that that is the case. Thank you.
Okay. And then there is something that will probably happen on June 15th, where the state will reduce, obviously, the the state will reduce, obviously, the tiered system will go away and will reduce the guidelines where you don't have to wear masks anymore. I believe the mask mandate is also going away. And I just want to make sure and, and make this public, please respect the decisions and choices of each business and how they want to proceed after June 15th. Some people may still require their clients to come in and wear a mask, and some people may not. And I think that we just need to be respectful of whichever choices business are making at that point. I just wanted to make that. Also, I believe that there are some changes coming up to our website where we will no longer be doing a daily update. I was wondering if you can say something along those, about that?
Absolutely. And thank you for that reminder. So because the cases have been low, the case numbers have been low for a number of weeks, and because we are moving to a different section of this pandemic and going beyond the blueprint, we have had discussions with our epidemiologists and within the Department of Public Health that instead of updating the numbers every day, because we feel that it's a lot of work and not entirely necessary, that the numbers on the website, the case numbers rates will be updated. We, we will obviously have the numbers, but they will be updated slightly less. And actually, it will be updated only twice a week. Sarah, would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, thanks. And I'll just add to what Dr. Bloom said. The state site covid19.ca.gov will continue to have daily updates for all counties, including Lake County. So if people are interested in seeing the daily updates, it will continue to be reported. That's cases, daily case rate, testing positivity, testing rate on the state site will continue, all continue to monitor the data on a daily basis. But because, of course, as we all know through this pandemic, you know, there's lags with testing results, a daily update, I just don't feel is warranted anymore with declining numbers. Again, we'll be monitoring it internally. If there is a change, we, that we feel like there's an increase in cases or something else happening, we will certainly look at that and can shift back to more frequent reporting. But moving in past June 15th, and in preparation for that, feel like twice a week is a good cadence. And I'm happy also to take any more questions on that.
Thank you for that. And my last part is based on the numbers that we show on the site. I know that it's very confusing because on the site, there's a link to that covid19.ca.gov. You can go to the dashboard when you look at every county and see what their status is for testing, for deaths, for cases. But the, the state of California has a different case number than we do. And I know that we've, other counties have had problems with numbers not matching, and they've had to provide numbers to the state in order to reduce. I know that Merced County was the last one that had this battle with the state to try and reduce them from purple to red, saying these numbers aren't correct. We're so close. We're at 2.1% positivity rate. And I know that it has to last for at least two weeks before we can move on to yellow. And I just wish that we can move on to yellow in order to finally get to June 15th rather than jumping off the edge of orange into nothing. And so I just want to make sure that if those numbers don't match, what are the correct numbers? Is it the ones that we show on our site? Is it what they show on their site? And if, if that number that we find is the correct number, does that reduce us to a place where we would be eligible? And in fact, now that I think about it, we're not because of the vaccination rate. So that is an absolute moot point, and I won't go into that.
Yeah, I, and Dr. I'll just comment on that, that yes, there have been, and like you said, many counties' discrepancies, what counties have reported and what the state reports for counties. We've always been like within 10 to 20 cases. So a relatively small number. There's a couple reasons why. The blueprint rules clearly define what's counted as a case, what's not. So the blueprint excludes prisoners, for example, who test positive. And we have our algorithm that's slightly different. What I've found throughout since I've been supporting Lake County is actually in many cases, the, the, the state will report a slightly lower daily case rate than what I'm seeing with our inclusion criteria. So it's always been a, a lower rate. So I think that's positive. And again, I'll continue to watch it so that if there are any major discrepancies, it'll be resolved. And yeah, I'll, I'll, yeah, end it there. And to your point, the, because Lake County is more than 5% below the state's vaccination coverage. And given you'd need two weeks and we don't have that this week, and then we're, we're, you know, three weeks to June 15th, I won't see any movement. I don't expect seeing any movement to yellow, unfortunately, before then.
Thank you very much. And that's the rest of my questions. Any further questions from board members before we open up? Supervisor Crandall?
Yes. Good morning, Dr. Bloom. Yeah, just had a question. You mentioned something about youth and adolescents and the vaccination. Is, is that being encouraged right now? Or is that, is that scheduled to be encouraged soon?
Oh, no, that is, that is absolutely being encouraged right now. It's, as, as we mentioned in the data, when you actually looked at the, the age ranges, that only about 4% of youth and adolescents are covered. That would be 12-year, that would be 12 years old plus, covered with vaccination. And that is being currently encouraged, that is being offered. It's just that that is newer, certainly is newer and has only been available for the past few weeks. So certainly, the vaccination coverage of that group is lagging behind the rest of the groups that we've seen because we just weren't able to, to do it as it, as it wasn't approved by the CDC, by the FDA. So, that being said, that is being encouraged at this time in answer to your question.
Thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure because also, knowing that, you know, there's a low number of adolescents or kids, you know, being diagnosed with COVID-19, it's also to ensure that they're not becoming asymptomatic and passing it to seniors or whoever has comorbidities. And I, I highlight these things just because I heard you say it, and I just could, just thought it out. And I just wanted to reassure and reaffirm.
Absolutely. And, and I want to be clear as well that children are getting it. We are seeing here and there children with COVID-19. Again, they may not be sick besides maybe a cough or fever. And some children do get quite sick. It's just not very common that that is the case. But as we know, it is a highly transmissible disease. And so then the child unfortunately can spread that disease to everybody in the household where there are older folks who can get significantly more ill.
Thank you.
And I don't see any further comments or questions. So let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Anybody in the boardroom have a public comment on this item? All right, let's go ahead and move on over to the Zoom room. And we have Teodora Doncheva. Let's go ahead and unmute if we can, please, Jake.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Teodora Doncheva. I live in Hidden Valley Lake. Thank you so much for your time and for your service. I would like to add my voice to that of Dr. Will Tuttle. I believe you have been hearing from him every week. I hope you have been following up with the information he has been providing to you. There are many more of us around who are very concerned about this widespread one-size, one-size, sorry, fits all promotion of an experimental product with so many unknowns about it. As you know, these vaccines have not been approved by the FDA. They have only got an emergency use authorization. And there are, I believe, about 4,000 reported deaths and about 15,000 or more, or more serious and critical adverse effects, meaning hospitalizations or ER visits. Without going so much into detail about how imperfect the virus is as a reporting systems, system, there likely are a lot more adverse effects. Any other vaccine would have been pulled off the market a long time ago. And instead, what do we do? We now promote it to kids, the one group that almost never gets sick with the virus. And by the way, even with the vaccine, the virus can be spread. So this is just unthinkable to me, with all the data showing potential risks, short-term and long-term, like vaccine-induced immune enhancement or autoimmune diseases. So please consider all the data that is available. And I will be, I will be following up with an email with more information shortly. Please think twice before deciding to implement vaccine passports or digital certificates in order to, for people to participate with society. Instead, please focus your attention and efforts on promoting prevention and early treatment. Thank you again so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Just want to make sure that everyone's aware that we have not had a single conversation here in the county about vaccine passports. So saying that we're, we shouldn't do it is just kind of jumping the gun on something that has not been discussed. It is being debated in other areas, and it is being debated also at the state, but it has not moved forward at this time. So let's not talk of things that aren't real at this moment in time. Let's move on to phone 6205.
Good morning. This is Bart Levinson. I have a specific question for Dr. Bloom. On KCYX Mendocino Radio, they have been having public service announcements about a mobile vaccination unit, VAN, that's been available for a couple of months now. It goes to individuals, it goes to businesses, and they advertise. Can Dr. Bloom please verify what exactly is available now in Lake County? The ads on KCYX say they're funded by NCO. And if NCO is involved, are they involved also in funding a mobile vaccination unit for Lake County?
Dr. Bloom, if you could respond, please.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for that comment. So at this time, there is not a mobile vaccination unit from the Department of Public Health going around to businesses or being advertised on, on the radio. There are resources in Lake County to go around and do mobile vaccinations. And I absolutely appreciate you pointing out the communication on the radio that has been out in other counties, as well as the, the funding source. However, that is, that is not what is going on in Lake County at this time. So with our efforts, we want to make sure that the, the vaccination efforts that are being put out there with either a mobile vaccination unit, which has lots of logistics behind it, or with certain pop-up sites at a business or at a senior center or in a certain zip code, will have the best chance of uptake. As we only have certain resources, and we don't have a huge unlimited supply of resources, and we want to put those resources where they will be most efficient and most effective. So that being said, I absolutely appreciate that. I'm very happy to hear that there is, you know, a, a bunch of communication regarding a mobile vaccination resource that is going around to different businesses to, to help put the vaccine out there. And there have been many discussions within our county of the different types of mobile sources that we may end up utilizing. And if they actually, we anticipate that they actually will help to increase vaccination coverage. And again, that ranges from utilizing resources with our partners from Sutter or our partners from Adventist, or our EMS partners, or our Department of Public Health trailer, or getting, or purchasing, actually, we're looking at purchasing a mobile unit, a mobile clinic unit. So there are certainly a number of these specific mobile resources that have been discussed. And we are going forward and looking at the best way to reach our population using those units. But currently, to answer your question, we do not have that resource out and about at this time.
Thank you very much for your response, Dr. Bloom. Any further comments from, we have Will Tuttle?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you all very much for all of your efforts to keep Lake County people healthy and safe. So I'd like to follow up with what Dr. Bloom was saying, that we should use our common sense. And I think this is really the problem, that we're not using our common sense, essentially. We have a situation, I just heard you saying that you're targeting 18 to 49-year-olds to take a vaccine, that is not really a vaccine. As we know, it's an experimental genetic modification protocol that is having devastating impacts. We're over 4,200 deaths, there's over 225,000 injuries have been reported to VAERS, which is notorious for under-reporting deaths and injuries. And the 18 to 49-year-old risk of death from COVID is, is minuscule. It's 99.98% survival rate. So we're, we're causing tremendous risk. That's the real risk is from these injections. And according to all the animal trials, which basically kill the animals, it happened quite a bit later. And we have quite a few experts saying that in the, in six months, a year, year and a half, two years, we're going to see lots of deaths from these. And so I think people who are vaccine hesitant at this point are not just hesitant. It's like, you know, if someone doesn't want to get raped, you know, you can call them hesitant, but they're not hesitant. They don't want it. They don't want to be harmed. And we have a situation, I think you're all aware of it, I've said it before, where the pharmaceutical industry has captured the educational system a long time ago, the governmental agencies, as well as the mainstream media. And a fear pandemic has been planned and is being rolled out. And we're all victims of that. We're, we're, this is a pyramidal structure that's been rolling out. And you folks, I, I don't blame anybody. I mean, I certainly don't blame Dr. Bloom. I know going through the, the whole training, you just have to do what they tell you. But, but the, but you folks, really, in many ways, as the supervisors are also victims, but you're also perpetrators in the sense that you're causing terrible things to happen. I mean, lockdowns, the churches are still, people still can't go to church. We need, we're human beings. We need touch, we need hugs, we need to be able to breathe. Our body only has four main ways of eliminating toxins, right? We have our, our bladder, our bowel, and our, our skin, and our breath. And most of the toxins come out of our breath. We're wearing, forced to wear masks, we're inhaling toxins, we're getting hyp, hyperpnea and hypoxia. And we're really harming children psychologically. I mean, this is devastating economically. It's a massive transfer of wealth. It's being rolled out. And you're really the only defense that we have as residents. So again, I just appeal to you to please do your homework. Do, use common sense. Think about this.
Mr. Tuttle, your three minutes are up.
Survival rate is much less. Okay, I'll wrap it up. But thank, thank you very much. And I really appreciate your making an effort to do more research and get outside of the box that is given to us by the media. Thank you.
I need to make a quick statement. I don't know how to say this kindly, but to compare a freedom of choice to get a vaccine to having a choice of being raped is a very, very, very horrible analogy that I hope you never use again, and I don't want to hear again either. So please, I, you have your right to have your freedom of speech, but I have my right to tell you that is probably one of the most inappropriate things I've heard in a very long time. Supervisor Scott?
That was absolutely disgusting. I, I normally don't speak up for things like this, but comparing a vaccine to being raped, that was probably one of the most disgusting things I've ever heard here.
And I, it's a weekly situation of Dr. Tuttle coming on here and speaking to us. I would typically ask Dr. Bloom to respond today, but at this point, I would just like to move on. So, Dr. Bloom, if you don't mind, unless you really feel the need to respond to that, I, I think we're going to move on.
There, there is one thing that I would like to respond to, if you don't mind. One specific thing. The, the, this is actually two. The, the, this actually two. First of all, the term of genetic modification variants, or I, I'm not sure exactly the language that was used, but it is not a genetic modification. There is no DNA being modified in these, by these vaccines. They are RNA vaccines. RNA makes a protein and then gets degraded in the body and goes away. The protein is what the body's immune system then identifies. The protein that is being made is part of the spike protein on the coronavirus itself. And therefore, the body can identify that protein later if it becomes infected and it can respond to it appropriately. So there is not a DNA modification. These vaccines are not modifying the genetics of your body. It goes away. It is not staying in your genetic makeup. So I want to be absolutely clear about that and dispel any myths about that because that is very important for people to know and to have the correct information about how these vaccinations work. And I use the word vaccinations because that is what they are. They are vaccinations, they confer immunity, and that is what they are. It is not something nefarious going on. And the virus doesn't care about what you call it. The virus wants to live and wants to infect and wants to be in your body. And when your body has never seen this virus before, it needs help. And these vaccinations are the tool that we have, based on science, to help you and to help your body to defend itself against this virus and the horribleness that can happen if you get a severe case of it. So that is all that I want to say, and I won't go any further into it. But to say that that is what the vaccination is, not a genetic modification tool. It is mRNA, which then is degraded by your body. It makes a protein for your body to recognize, which is then degraded. And then you have a memory, your body has a memory of that protein. So when it sees it again, if it sees it in the version of the virus that you unfortunately, hopefully, are not infected with, but if you do become infected, then you will be able to respond to it because your body has seen it before. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bloom. Okay. I see we have another comment from phone 6478. Please let us know your name.
Hello?
Hello.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, hi, thank you so much for having this weekly event. And my name is Madeline.
If we can get your name. Oh, sorry. I just cut you off when you were saying.
Madeline, yes. And I, I like to really say something like the, this so-called vaccination has so many side effects beside dying. And there is another much better solution with this hydroxychloroquine and many more. And there are medical M.D.s who have 100% of success. So we shouldn't be so afraid to eventually get that COVID-19. So that's really not the end of the world because within a few days, one can cure it. And usually, like in the beginning, like Dr. Fauci said, that we like to get her commu, immunity. And this would mean that we would get it and then we're done with it. So I just like to say this and I thank you very much for hearing my voice.
Thank you for your comment. For about 580,000 people, it was the end of their world. Let's go ahead and see if there's any further public comments. And I see none, so let's bring it back. Any further comments from the board? Dr. Bloom, Sarah, thank you very much for your presentation today and thank you for the work that you continue to do.